The agenda is A and R, approval not required plan. It's map 128, lot 6. It's Kristy and Scott Kendrick. Is anybody here for that? Okay. Generally, in the past, and I just speak with this to the board, we've been receiving these and then like on the second meeting, we approve. Tonight, we could approve this if everything... We have somebody... If the A and Rs come to the office and they're... Everybody on the board that we could do it the first night just to get it out of the way because we've had a lot of these solar projects and things like that that have been taking up a lot of time. We figured we might do this just one night if we have somebody to represent it. And Jill just wanted to know that so that she could tell the person bringing the plans and what particular they would have to show up at. So if that's all right with everybody, maybe we'll do it that way.
Yeah, I just want to, Mr. Chair, through you, I just want to make sure that the applicant knows is that when they come, it's not a stamped okay, that it could go to another meeting. We're just seeing the plan today.
Yep.
And we have questions or we want to look at it, and it could be the following day.
Okay, if there's a problem.
Follow-up meeting or whatever.
Yeah.
I don't want to be able to... We've always had the status that we'd receive them and we'd vote on the next meeting. I understand that whole process that was in place. I personally don't want to get something today and say, "Okay," without fully digesting. If the applicant's here and they have all the information, stuff like that, and the board feels that they want to vote on it, so be it.
Okay. So maybe we'll do... We'll try that. We'll just do it at the first meeting that we get the plans.
I just don't want...
If we have any questions, then we'd have to just...
I want to ensure through you, Mr. Chair, to the planning director, I want to ensure that if staff makes them fully aware that it could take up to two meetings for A and Rs. I don't want staff saying, "You just come in this day and you'll be done that night." I don't want to do a false pretense because then it puts us under the gun.
Okay. We'll just advise Jill about that.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. All right. So there is somebody here to represent this. If you want to just come up and if you could speak, make yourself comfortable in one of those fine chairs there and if you could tell us what's going on.
Well, we have a good size...
Give us your name.
My name is Kristy Gibbs at 366 Tremont Street. I'm the owner of the property with my husband, and we want to divide our property into two pieces.
Excuse me?
We want to divide the property into two parcels.
Okay. So I see you have... So you have, okay, one large parcel. Oh, let me see. Okay. Actually, so you got lot 1 and lot 2 here.
Right.
So you're just taking... You're taking the big parcel was lot 2.
Has some...
Subdividing it.
Yep.
Putting property lines around your property.
Right, I'm just dividing it into two parcels. The existing home and outbuildings with about two acres of property around it and the other piece being the remainder.
There's some items missing from one plan to the next plan.
There's no locust map.
Oh.
Nor is it on the MyLAW.
Is there a locust map on the MyLAW? Is that required?
It's part of the plan, part of the Form A. You're supposed to have the locust map on the upper right-hand corner. Shows where it is in conjunction with the town. I mean, it's stamped by somebody.
It's, yeah, it was stamped by us the board and...
How do you know that?
Yeah. Did you have time to review that as a requirement or not?
I believe it is.
Does it have a locust map?
So we can do revised plans and revise locusts if we... I mean, it seems to me from what I'm seeing, it meets all the requirements of a Form A. Just before we sign the documents, have Art bring us the approved locust... Approved plans, approved documents.
Right. Well, you know, I know that Art has worked here in Carver and is part of the town here, so I assumed he'd include what was required on there, and I don't know about the locust part.
It could have just been one of those things.
Okay. So what do I need to do?
So we won't sign this tonight.
Okay.
But what you could do is you could find out if that's a requirement then, and if it is a requirement, then Art will have to come and pick up the MyLAW to add that.
Okay.
Whether it is or it isn't, we could sign this at our next meeting.
Okay.
Doesn't necessarily mean that you probably have to be here, though. I mean, we could just... If a new... If something has to be added to the plan, then we could just sign it.
Okay. Okay. Well, you know, it's easy for me to be here, whatever is the right thing to do.
So we'll make a decision probably next meeting.
Okay.
And in the meantime...
Do you contact Art or do I?
How do you want to do that?
Oh, Mr. Chair, I'm going to recommend that staff reaches out to Art's board and tell him this is what's needed for the paper documents and also for the MyLAW. MyLAW, and if he could have them, then we could have them for our next meeting.
Yeah.
It seems like from what I see in the Form A, it meets all the requirements that we need. So just to relieve some concern or anything, I don't personally have a reason not to approve this.
Okay.
You meet all the requirements of a Form A.
Thank you.
So I think, in my opinion, that that had happened, and I don't think the board has any problem with it either, but I won't speak for them.
Okay.
It's just that I have a problem with the documents.
Okay, that's fine. This was submitted on December 12th, I think, with the payment required, so there was time for someone to review it and find that, so I...
It's just an oversight.
Okay. I appreciate that.
I'd hate for you to have the documents and then go to file them at the registry of deeds and they say, "Hey, listen, by the way, you need X."
That's great. I appreciate that a lot. So that's all I need to do then is...
We'll let staff reach out to Art.
Okay.
Yeah, just to make sure that you need this, and it can be added if it is needed.
Okay.
Then we'll sign it.
And I'm sure Art will be in.
Before we step away, I always ask, "Why are you doing this?"
Why are we doing this? We're considering building out back and possibly selling our house.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So if you want, Mr. Chair, I'll take those.
Yeah.
Pop these.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have approval of a rear lot on Forest Street, which is map 50 lot. It's a discussion and a possible approval. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Stacy Minahan with Beals &amp; Thomas. I'm pinch hitting for Sarah tonight, who is sorry that she can't be here. This is a property that was discussed with the board before, but I do have an easel, if it's helpful, to have the plan for her, too.
Please.
Yeah, sure.
And where is it good to set up?
We usually set it up right over there, just so that way the public can see it and...
Do you need a second one?
Nope.
Sure, okay.
So again, Stacy Minahan with Beals &amp; Thomas, filling in for Sarah, who's brought me up to speed on this particular project, and I'm happy to provide some background. I think Sarah and Jim had met earlier this week as well, but this is a conceptual project where we're doing some kind of permitting path due diligence. We're representing Sunraise Development regarding the potential solar project on the Johnson property. So we're seeking agreement from the planning board that this property can be considered a rear lot. As background, Sarah had been to meet with the board informally because there is 60 feet of frontage, so it doesn't meet the required frontage. It's a little unclear if the solar bylaw requires a parcel to meet the required frontage, but I believe at that time, the planning board had suggested that we go to the ZBA and request a variance for that. In the ZBA's review, they found what they think is a more appropriate permitting path given this rear lot provision. So essentially, we've now met, Sarah has met with Jim, the town planner, the building commissioner, who submitted a memo as well as the town administrator, and it seems like all are in agreement that this rear lot provision is the most appropriate path forward. Our ZBA hearing is still pending, so if the board sees fit and agrees that this is a rear lot, then our next step would be that we withdraw our variance request to the ZBA and move forward as a rear lot. Beyond that, I'm happy to provide more background or answer questions if needed, but that's the issue in a nutshell.
Okay. Do we have the property line plans in our packages?
So we have, I believe, these exhibits that were submitted before. This is just at a conceptual plan phase, that plan level.
All right. So do we have a plan of the property lines, just showing the lots?
These exhibits...
You know, other than the... That's just a conceptual plan.
Are you asking about like a stamped survey plan of the...
Yes, yeah, yeah.
No, we've been trying to do some due diligence before investing a significant amount to confirm that there is a permitting path because a boundary, you know, full boundary survey, starting to do design, things like that is a significant undertaking. So that's why we've been meeting first with the planning board informally, then with the ZBA, and then with the others in town as well.
Because I remember looking at this with Jim one day, and I guess we just had the, what, the assessors' map that we were looking at?
Yeah, I believe we were just looking at assessors' map.
Correct.
For all the property lines.
So it might be... But if you could... It's hard for the other planning board members to kind of visualize this thing, and I don't know if there's a way that you can explain it.
Sure. So the property is comprised of, gosh, I think it's over, yeah, 213 acres of land with frontage on Front Street. So the property frontage is here on Front Street at 60 feet. However, the site is not accessed from this frontage. The site is currently accessed off of Fuller Street via an agreement with the abutting landowner. So nothing formal in place, but there's a paved drive that the properties have always utilized, and that's shown better on this exhibit. So this is oriented the same way, even though I know the text is sideways. So the frontage here versus the access, which is, it always takes me a minute to find it, off of Fuller Street here. The property is comprised of two parcels, one here, one here, largely cranberry bogs. The solar, if it moves forward, would be on bog 1 and bog 2.
Is there another... Through the chair, is there another solar operation on the far left there? There's a... Looks like six bogs.
Up here?
Down below, below the water body.
Oh, here.
Right there.
Yes, on the adjacent parcel, I believe there is.
And I believe that's off of Fuller Street. That would be 42 Fuller Street.
I'm not sure where they get their access, but it would make sense that it's off of Fuller Street with Fuller Street being here and this being the main access for this property as well. I'm not familiar with the details of that solar project.
So the question is, is whether that 60-foot width leg is... Could be used as frontage for the property.
Well, the question now before the board is, can these parcels be considered a rear lot? And that creates the permitting path forward.
With that 60-foot frontage there?
Right, yes, with that 60-foot frontage, yep.
So, Mr. Chair, through you, under 2340 on rear lots, it says, da-da-da, I'm trying to pull it up here, lot width at no point shall be less than 40 feet, and lot frontage is... Frontage is not less than 40 feet. Frontage shall meet all requirements contained in defined... In definition of frontage in Article 5, 4 herein. So it says not less than 40, so they got 60 feet of frontage. I gotta look up that other one.
And I believe the frontage definition references showing that some sort of access can happen through the frontage, such as pedestrian or ATV or other, which is, I believe, part of the discussion that Sarah had with the building commissioner in terms of meeting that.
Right.
And so we had gone through and analyzed those rear lot requirements and provided a memo to the building commissioner to facilitate his review, and then he subsequently issued his memo dated December 12th, concurrent with the rear lot status.
I'm just looking for the definition of frontage. Sorry for the delay.
Nope, that's fine.
I don't have definitions.
So essentially, that Forest Street frontage could be designed to meet the combined frontage and access requirements, although the applicant, if the project moves forward, would prefer to access the site through the other existing access rather than the existing frontage since, given the neighbors.
So for clarification through you, Mr. Chair, frontage, another definition of frontage shall meet the boundaries of a lot coincided with the street lines being in unbroken distance along a way currently maintained by the town, county, or state, or longer ways shown on the definitive plan or applicable subdivision throughout which actually access to potential building site shall be required. Private ways, which has not been constructed as part of a subdivision approved in accordance with the subdivision control by law, may provide frontage only upon a determination of the planning board that it provides adequate access for fire, police, and emergency vehicles. Lot frontage shall be measured continuously along the one street line between side lot lines, or in the case of corner lots, between one side, one side lot line and midway point of the corners. Lots with interrupting or discontinuous frontage must determine that the required length along the street may be obtained from one continuous frontage section without any totaling a discontinuous frontage section. So all that is just the definition, but according to the bylaw says that it can't be no less than 40 feet. So they have 60 for a rear lot. And they can gain... Can you gain access into the lot from that frontage of 40 feet? I mean, 60 feet.
Yeah, it could be designed to gain access. The preference will be if it moves forward to not access the site through that area, but it could be done.
And how are you going to access that? I mean, just so...
Well...
Get the complete story.
Sure. I mean, I can't speak to that definitively, I suppose, since I'm not as intimately familiar with the project as Sarah, and so it's just in the conceptual phase, but my understanding is that the preference is to continue using the existing paved access to the prop... That the property currently uses as opposed to constructing anything along, in the actual frontage.
But that paved access is not completely on that property.
Correct.
It's on other people's property.
Right, yes. Yeah, so there's been an informal agreement, is my understanding, over the years, and I imagine that that would become formalized or somehow documented during a future permitting process if it moves forward. Or perhaps there ends up being some other access option, but that's what I'm aware of right now.
Yeah, I thought when we had discussed this, because I met with Jim and the building inspector when we... When this first came up, and I guess the thought was is that that 60-foot leg there, although it looked like it could be used as an access, it's actually wetlands there.
There are some wetlands here. It's obviously more proximate to neighbors, so there's a few reasons that it would be desirable to not use that as the access.
So they... So you just have another access? Because it does say in the bylaw that supposedly that it should be used or it could be used as a access to the property.
Right.
Mr. Chair, and through you, it also says, "On a private way," which you're saying you're coming in from a different location for access, "which has not been constructed as part of a subdivision," because we're subdividing this, trying to do this, "approval in accordance with the subdivision control by law may provide frontage only upon a determination by the planning board that it provides adequate access for fire, police, and emergency vehicles." So that other access point that you're going to be taking would have to meet all those requirements in my reading of this.
Right, in terms of providing emergency services access and anything else that would be required during the... Yes. And I think that's...
If I read that right.
You know, I don't know whether this would be construed as a private way, this segment, or if it would be more as an access drive, but either way, it would need to meet whatever town requirements in terms of emergency access in particular is usually the big one.
Jim, did you have anything to say about this? Because I know that you've looked at this with the staff.
So at the ZBA hearing, Attorney Gray went into depth about the frontage requirement, and his reading was that that frontage would have to provide the access to the site. And so they seem to be leaning towards kind of a possible decision where it would may not be approved. And so they, you know, suggested that the applicant may want to come here first to see if this would work as an alternate provision to provide, you know, there's a difference between access and frontage for the property. There's already access to the property, which is on the agricultural operation right now. There's another solar project, I believe it's 42 Fuller, that uses that same access. We're not sure if they have frontage, how they got the frontage. That's something I would like to take a look at to see, you know, how that got approved. Questioned or it's in discussion, but I was just curious. Okay, here's another project that's in that same wetland, same cranberry complex of bogs. This one over here got approved, and then this one over here.
So they just... So through you, Mr. Chair, to the applicant, that other access that they want to use to go into the site, do they own that property?
No.
That's a dead issue.
And it's not in an approved way.
Right.
So...
So I know, and I apologize for being at a slight disadvantage, but in Sarah's discussions, and Jim, perhaps you can weigh in as well, but with the building commissioner and town administrator, well, and first, the ZBA, as Jim noted, in their review of the bylaw, they, I believe, actually raised the rear lot as a more appropriate permitting path. I mean, obviously, I think there's a preference to not have to grant a variance if it's... If there's another way. And then when Sarah followed up with the building commissioner in the read of it, and I will acknowledge we're not getting into, you know, design details or where the access is from, just it seemed that people were in agreement that if this could be considered a rear lot, part of which is required that the planning board agree that it can be, you know, sign off that it can be a rear lot, then there was a permitting path forward for it. I'll certainly follow up on the private way or access, but I would imagine, similar to other projects, you know, there could be an easement or some sort of granting to allow access to our property even though it's not owned fully.
Well, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a suggestion that we take the information under advisement, do a little bit more research on that, and then put this on our next agenda to look at this and have some information from Mr. Gray and also from the ZBA. I'd like to look more into the... That secondary access. I do know that this board had a litigation when a parcel of property didn't have continuous ownership for access, and we went through that. So that's what my suggestion would be, is take that realization.
You know, I'm thinking that if it could be shown that that 60-foot leg could become an access, even though there may be wetlands there now, and if it could be demonstrated that a road could be put through there, then I think I'd be a little more agreeable to this now that we've talked about it tonight. And then you could still use the access way that's being used now, but at least if we knew that a road could be constructed, I mean, if it couldn't be constructed, then I think that may be something that would make it, you know, a little more difficult to accept as a rear lot. But if you could show that something could be... A road could be put through there, then, but not actually building it, but you could still use the rear access, but so that we'd know that if a road had to be put in there, that it could be done.
Sure. And if you don't mind, Jim, I'm not sure if you remember anything about this, because I know Sarah mentioned to me specifically that she and the town was surprised when looking at the frontage definition, that it actually didn't need to be a full road. It could just be showing that some sort of access, even pedestrian or ATV, not necessarily for the project, could be undertaken through there, would qualify it. Is that...
I think we have to take a look, more of a look, because when Will was going through the requirements, I saw something I didn't see when I first looked at it.
Mm-hmm.
I'll be open, I kind of oversaw that.
Yep.
And that has to do with this frontage definition, which at the ZBA meeting, you know, Mr. Gray read the frontage definition, so I didn't see that connection back over to that.
Yep.
So I think we need just take another look at it and figure out, take a look at that frontage, you know, that frontage definition.
Right, and how it interplays.
Can real access be made to the properties where the solar planners are going to go through that area, not necessarily, you know, because we have bog roads that go in on a lot of properties that are suitable, you know, for just something equivalent to a bog road goes through there and provide, you know, the access to the property. I'm just taking another look at this thing. another look at this thing.
And are you looking more for kind of a conceptual level assessment of, you know, there's sixty feet, this is what's out there, a road would be this wide, you know, some, and submission of a memo or something summarizing to document?
Whether a road could be put in there if needed.
Or a drive, okay.
Other question. So the solar project that's to the left that's existing now, that this is separate, separate companies, separate landowners?
I can't speak to whether it's separate companies. I don't know.
I know Clean Energy Company is the one that did Forty-Two Fuller.
Okay, so then it's separate.
But I'm not, I'm not sure about the property ownership of it.
So the current bogs that are to the right where the proposed, where they'd like to put the project?
Mm-hmm.
What's the access to those bogs now?
In terms of the agricultural operation? Sure, it's. It's this paved road, paved drive off of Fuller Street. So it goes through this adjacent property. They have an informal agreement where for years, access to these bogs has been via this paved, this is a paved drive off of Fuller.
So they're currently using that for their Cranberry operation? Because I know what you're saying, Will, is we had that issue before, and where that's under an agreement versus.
Ownership.
Right. That's another issue we have to look at.
I'm sorry, what was that one? I missed it.
Where it's not ownership, but we have, we had an issue a few years ago of ownership for the, for the.
Frontage.
Frontage.
Yeah.
And the access to that.
Mm-hmm.
So where right now they don't own that, that's under an agreement, will that change the whole situation?
The problem is, is that, through you, Mr. Chair, that, that front parcel that has the already existing solar, solar field off of Fuller Street, that is the access for that, that's continuously owned by that property owner that gave access to that solar project that we approved. So you can't take that away from him.
Right.
Because that's the access under his approved solar project for his parcel property. Even though there's a gentleman's agreement, hey, you can use the roadway to go in and service your bogs and da-da-da-da-da, the, your applicant needs to have frontage to the project that he has.
Mm-hmm.
And, and to make it a viable project.
Right. So it almost sounds like there's two potentially different but related issues that we're discussing. There's the rear lot question, which may have a link with the frontage definition that Jim mentioned wanting to look into. And then there's a separate issue, even if this is classified as a rear lot, that there's a concern that using that existing informal access agreement, even if it's, you know, made more formal or, there is a concern that if that's not owned by the same property owner as the solar project or as, as the property, that, that there's a concern that that may be a challenge for permitting. Which I appreciate hearing, because this is, we're doing due diligence to try and, you know, suss out any issues.
In my opinion, just so that way I can show you exactly where, where I stand, not the board just yet, that the solar project, the rear lot requirements, you have to be able to have the frontage and, and meet those requirements. And from the way that I'm reading it, I think you do.
Right.
The second part of this whole thing is to have a viable, developable site, you have to have access to that rear lot from that roadway that you, that the owner of the property, your property owner owns.
Okay.
So that would be off of Fuller Street through that forty-foot access going through. That forty feet would meet the requirements of the fire department on building a viable road where public safety vehicles, fire department get through and all that other stuff through that.
Mm-hmm.
Would it consist of building culverts for the waterways and all the wa- yes.
Right.
Could it be engineered to be done? Absolutely.
Right.
But I believe that your project, you have to look at your project, in my opinion, as your project, not utilizing the access that's in now to get to the bog.
Okay. And so is that something that I could follow up with Jim about as well to understand from the zoning bylaw perspective?
We need to do a little bit more research. I don't want to talk for Jim or the rest of the board.
Yep.
But I think the research and the way that, I've been on the board for a long time, the way that I interpretate the bylaw and stuff, that's a way that I can give you the best direction for your applicant.
Yep.
But I'd definitely follow up with staff and after we've been able to do some more.
Yep.
Okay.
Try to help.
I appreciate it.
I know when we, when I looked at this with Jim and the, and the building inspector, the problem we had a few years ago, a couple of years ago, was that the solar project didn't have any frontage.
Yes.
At all, period. This does have frontage, it's just the sixty-foot strip that, that goes out to the street. There is no access through that right now to the, to the project. So it, but in order to, to be called frontage, it's, it's also supposed to have a way going through that to access the property. But when we first looked at it, it looked like the developer had left that strip so that that rear lot could be accessed through that area. But then, now there's a question of whether that really could, can be done or not. And that's just something that, you know, I suppose it would be helpful to know if.
Yeah. I mean, certain.
Could be put through there.
Certainly it can be designed.
Yeah.
To, to have, with, with sixty, a sixty-foot width, we could certainly design a road, culverts, wetland crossings, bridge band, something like that.
And the reason that we had a problem with that was because the lot had no frontage. And if my memory serves me right, the reason the building inspector said he couldn't give that particular solar project a permit because it was, the lot did not have frontage.
Right.
In this case, it does have frontage, but unless it can be accessed through that, it's not really frontage by definition that we have.
And in terms of, unless it can be conceptually accessed through that?
Yeah.
Or in, it must be actually accessed through that?
I, I don't think there's a problem to, to come through the, the back way over other people's property, as long as you could, could use that leg if you had to. You know, that's, that's, that's my opinion.
Yep.
Will may have, and.
Understood.
Members of the board might have something a little different. But I mean, I've seen parcels of land with legs like that, but they have been accessed through private easements.
Right.
In other towns. So that's just my thought.
Yep. Yeah, that's more typically what we had run into, but it'll be interesting to see if that proves out. And yes, I mean, certainly I think we can submit some more formal information, but generally speaking, it certainly can be designed with a sixty-foot width. You know, I don't think there's a lot of topographic relief there, so that shouldn't be an issue. It just would not be the first choice for actually building the access, given some of the other constraints.
And I think I've also seen in my time that as long as you could, and we'd have to go through this, you'd have to look at this, Jim, but as long as you could prove that you could build something there, you may not have to build it if you could access it through another.
Right.
Show, you have to show that, that a road could be built.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's my opinion, something that you have to look at.
Yep. And is, well, I guess maybe this answer can't be, this question can't be answered yet, but that's something that it seems potentially the board might be looking for in order to make this rear lot determination. Is there anything else I can answer for the board?
I think that's it. Anything else from any of the board members? Okay. So this wasn't a public hearing. Do, can we just reschedule this? Do we have to do a vote on this? I think we, if you want to bring that information, if you could work with Jim and.
Yep.
And Sarah.
Yep.
And then come back. Our next meeting will be January twenty-eighth.
Yes. Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
That answers some of your questions.
Yes, it was helpful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. We have some public hearings that, some of them are going to be continued, and some of them we're going to hear tonight. The first one is application of Rebecca Flaherty. Yeah, we have, what do we heard about that, Jim?
So our staff has made several attempts to call her. The most recent was last week, and they haven't heard any response from her. They tried to leave a message last week, and the voicemail was full, but there's been no reaching out to the office to present something for tonight. So I'm not sure if it's abandoned the project, but I know that there were some issues going on in her life that maybe she's focusing on that right now and may come back in the future.
So do you want to continue this? Or do, or do we have to contact her to see if she wants to withdraw?
She hasn't responded. I don't know if, you kind of deny without prejudice, so that allows her to come back if she decides to, you know, things shape up and things are looking good, give her an opportunity to come back when, when she's ready.
All right. How's that sound?
It's a public hearing, right?
Uh, this, yeah, this is a, this was a public hearing. Did we?
We did.
I know that she, I know, I know we opened up the public hearing, and I know that she did, she was here for one night, right?
Yep.
And then she was going to come back to us with some revised plans. And then since then, we have, we haven't been able to contact her.
Right.
So, Mr. Chair, if I may, we might want to see if anybody in the public would like to talk about this. And if not, I have a motion.
All right. So this is the application of Rebecca Flaherty requesting a special permit pursuant to sections twenty-two thirty of the Carver zoning bylaw located at sixty-six Home Street in Carver, which is assessors map seventy-five, lot thirty-one A dash I to operate a hobby kennel in a residential agricultural district. Is there anyone here tonight that has come for this particular project? And seeing no one.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to close the public hearing on Rebecca Flaherty, sixty-six Home Street.
Second that.
So we have a motion in the second for the discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to make a motion where, where the, the board hasn't received any action or any correspondence from the applicant. I'm going to make a motion to deny the application for Rebecca Flaherty, sixty-six Home Street without prejudice, which means that she can come back at any time. But we have no action, and it's been going on for a while. So that's my motion.
Second that.
So we have motion in the second for the discussion. Seeing none of those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So the next is, we have an application of Borrego Solar Systems, and this particular one is located at nineteen C Ward Street. And Jim, what have we heard about this?
So nineteen C Ward Street, Dean Smith is the engineer, working on behalf of Borrego, has requested continuance. They had a meeting set up last week to try to meet with the abutters. For some reason, that was continued, that was, that was not helped, but they're rescheduling the meeting, and so they wanted to give time to set up that meeting and, and get the feedback from the abutters in that case.
So we want to continue this?
I believe it's the next meeting they requested to.
So it'd be January twenty-eighth.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to continue the public hearing for Borrego Solar's, solar system for nineteen C Ward Street to February twenty-eight.
January.
Excuse me, January, January?
Yeah.
I'm all right. I went to February. Don't ask me why.
February twenty is my birthday, so, and I know it's, it's a.
January twenty-eight, two thousand twenty at seven o'clock.
I'll second that.
Have motion in the second for the discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Rushing my.
Now, the next is a public hearing, the application of Clean Energy Company, Joe Shanahan. And this was requesting a special permit and site plan review, and this was located at Zero Snap It Road. And so, Jim, where are we with that? I know that we had a meeting with Mr. Shanahan and.
Through last week.
Mr. Perry.
Perry.
Yeah, last week. And I believe they've, they've, they're going to move some of these panels so that the Perrys won't have such a direct view of the, the solar fields.
Right. So they, yeah, plan to leave one of the bog areas open, and then, so the, the Perrys are not kind of boxed in. Then the bog road would have some form of landscaping on it. And then the area, if you're looking out from the property to the left, there was a field of solar panels. Some of those panels will be rearranged and relocated to another area where there's a, it's right now, it's in the considered riverfront area where there was no panels proposed, and they're trying to relocate them over there. I know he's been in touch with Brooke Monroe, our conservation agent, just to get feedback to see if, you know, that technically is possible under the Wetlands Protection Act. Mr. Shanahan was asked to continue to, to the February eleventh meeting, so that way it gives him time to meet with the Perrys. I'm assuming he has to also meet with the Conservation Commission again, as well as Conservation and, you know, maybe some of the other neighbors, so that that way they can come back with revised plans.
All right.
Mr. Chair. I've got a quick question for Jim, if I may. The, they're going to move the proposed panels that were in front of Perry's house to the right, if you're looking out of their backyard?
Mm-hmm. So there were some panels, I'm just trying to, oh, so kind of directly in front and over to the left, there was, there was an area where they could screen. And then under that bog road over to the left, there was kind of a grouping of panels, don't know the number, but the idea was to generally move a cluster of those panels over to where the perennial stream is. If you remember, looking at the Perry's property from the sidewalk, there was a kind of a stream that went right through the middle of the bogs.
Right.
So the idea was to relocate it to that area where, in that gap where there's no panels planned in the current proposal.
And there, and there were other abutters that now would see this project more who didn't see it before, correct?
Mm-hmm. Possibly, but.
So I hope he's going to talk to them as well?
Right. I did send an email to him, and the chairman asked me to send an email as part of, you know, to clarify on the continuance, but also to put it out there to make sure that he speaks with all the other directed abutters, so that we're not coming back and , okay, we take care of the Perrys, but then.
Right.
There's three or four other people who come in and they're not happy with what's going on.
Okay. That's, I just want to make sure that he wasn't just concentrating on the Perrys and the other people as well, so.
During the meeting that Jim and I had with Mr. Perry and, and Mr. Shanahan, we discussed moving the field. We discussed putting up plantings in back of the bog that, that is directly in front of their property, so would screen the solar panels that, that are going to stay. And we also asked him to make sure that he, he met with all the neighbors there, and, you know, I asked him that be very thorough and, and meet with everybody and, to make sure that everybody's satisfied with this. I mean, we didn't have many houses out there. I think there were two houses that were active rather directly because the solar field was right in their backyard and it was clear. And there may have been a couple of houses that had screen views, but I asked him to make sure that all that was taken care of. And we'll make sure that, we'll try to make sure that.
I was more concerned with those other two neighbors that were to the right, to the right of the Perry's. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Sorry, Will, didn't mean to interrupt.
No worries. I just wanted to make sure. I just wanted to make sure we weren't deliberating information. We were just getting an update before we continued. Make a motion to continue the public hearing for Clean Energy Company for Zero Snapit Road to February 11th at 7 o'clock. February, okay.
February.
One more time.
I'll second.
So we have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Imagine if we were hearing all these tonight.
Oh, boy.
All right, so now we have, uh... On the application of, uh... This is another continuance. Application of Renewable Energy Development Partners, LLC, requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to sections 2230, 3100, 3580, and 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaw. Assessors Map 107, Lots 1-4, to allow construction of a large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installation located at Zero Pond Street in Carver, Mass. The project consists of a solar energy facility that includes two components, both located on a portion, uh, plus or minus 560 acres. It's Swan Hog Complex owned and operated by AT Makepeace Company. Two projects' components include a plus or minus 3-megawatt agricultural canal solar canopy and a plus or minus 1.4-megawatt dual-use ground-mounted array in a residential agricultural district. So, uh, we did go out, uh, on this, uh... See, we did... I did walk the site for the second time and Jim was with me. And then we later met up with Jen. I think the engineer is...
He goes.
Is out back. So before we can do anything, uh, I don't know, uh, I don't think... I don't think that Will has been out there. Have you been out there yet?
Nope.
This particular one?
No, it's during the daytime and I can't make it.
Yeah, so what we found out here is that, um... This is where most of the project is along a canal and they're gonna have a canopy. And most of that is unseen by any houses. This is pretty remote. Part of the end of the project that the canal ran along, there were a few houses that may... That had screen sites. And, um... But that portion of the project is being cut off now, temporarily cut off because of some deed researching. And, uh, so actually for the canal portion, there really isn't anybody that's gonna see that. There is a portion of this that's gonna be like in a sandpit area where they're actually gonna have a dual use and they're gonna do some farming and they're gonna, uh... Underneath the panels. So, um, that portion can be seen by a few residents that are far away. Several hundred feet, I would say, you know, four, 500 feet away. But, um, talking to the people that we have here tonight representing the project, they have come up with some excellent drawings, some elevation views, and also some proposals on how to screen these few houses.
Awesome.
So now that everybody's here...
Apologies, we thought we were gonna be here.
We thought we had ours.
We're trying to move this along. A lot of them have continued, so... And I know that everybody's anxious to get back home.
Sure. So again, Stacy Minahan with Beals and Thomas. I'm filling in for Sarah Sterns, who apologized, she can't be here, here with Hema and Tom Malahan from Renewable Energy Development Partners. I'll give a quick overview of kind of where we were and where we are now. I also have copies of the plans that I'll be speaking to tonight for the board, so... There are four reduced size sets in here as well, if anyone would like to walk through as we go along.
So I think the plan here tonight was to show us what's out there and then show us what you're gonna change. And then we'll finalize this at our next meeting, hopefully.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Stacy will give you an update on what we've done, but I think procedurally what we'd like to do is just walk through. The only thing we didn't discuss at the last hearing, I believe, is like the screening impacts. So we wanna give you an update on that. And then as I heard you mention, we've decided to redesign the project, the canopy portion. So we'll tell you what... How we're going to redesign it. And then we'd like to formally submit those design drawings later this week so that at our next hearing, you folks can deliberate and vote on a... An official application, an officially revised application.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so as a quick reminder for this property, it's a 600-acre parcel of land, so a significant agricultural land that is predominantly prambered bogs and wooded uplands and wooded wetlands. There are two dual-use components proposed. There's the table, solar table panels over the agricultural canal. And then there is a ground-mounted dual-use component within a currently wooded area, but it's an area that's been earmarked for sand removal. So since our last hearing, we've had two site visits. And as Hank mentioned, the proponents worked with our landscape architect as well as neighbors to address the screening request for the project. So in the post... And actually, let me start off by saying the items that Hank mentioned being revised. So on this overall sheet, you'll see in the plan set that I submitted, there are actually two sheets, C2.6s. One of them has these two colors for the solar panels along the ag canal. The red represents the previously proposed solar panels that are now no longer proposed. They've been eliminated, coincidentally, because of some title issues in that area that we don't think we can address very readily. So those have been removed. The second version of that sheet in the plan set is just a clean version that doesn't show those, so that you can see that. So that's the first change that's happened since the prior meeting.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. You have Chad Goldstein in the audience. Could you show on the map, it's number 48, kind of where the property line is and then where the end of the canal is? So there's a little bit, I think, a little bit of overlap over his property, but...
So this is Bow Street here. Numbers on the lot, numbers on Bow Street, so 48 Bow Street is right here. This is the back of his property line, the boundary between the Makepeace Land and his property. So the canal, canopy sections that we originally proposed include this stretch right here. All of these are being removed from the application. So what his back lot, what he faces now, the canopy sections that potentially have seen will be removed. The sections in blue remain.
And that's a perfect segue. So in that Bow Street area, although with the removal of those panels, screening isn't really necessary, we are proposing some rhododendron shrubs throughout that area. So actually, I'll flip.
We wanna highlight that we've done sections, sure.
Oh, sure. So the other item on these sheets is there is a section from each of the abutters' properties so that you can see the topography and that there's no... From the project. So this is that Bow Street area. This is 48. And you can see here, we've proposed rhododendrons to kind of fill out the understory adjacent to the new tree line. So in the ground-mounted area, we've included a few areas of screening. Although it is wooded, we recognize the potential for partial views and so have incorporated the board's suggestions for a fence, a berm, and plantings. So specifically, there's an eight-foot tall wooden privacy fence that's proposed to run along the edge between the neighbors. There's also a berm that will be incorporated and is shown on the individual section so that you can see the heights and how that will block the views. And then there are plantings proposed, some in areas where it will help screen, kind of right up against the berm and the wooden fence. And then also some along the existing tree line or approximate to the property line. These are able to grow since there aren't shading impacts and I think it'll make this edge of the woods a little bit more robust for screening as well.
I just had a quick question. The berm, where would the berm be in relationship to... Was that that street that we went up Bunny's Way?
Yep, so...
Bunny's is...
Bunny's is, yep.
If I may.
Yep.
So, Mr. Hoffman, the berm and the fence will be right at the edge of the proposed solar array, right at the perimeter of the array, so on-site. That provides the most positive, like definitive screening of the site. And then up on the lot line, on Bunny's Road, is where we're proposing to do some supplemental plantings. So if you remember when we're out there, when we're standing...
Grayish house, the gray house with the blue shadows.
Right, so when we're standing out there looking at it, we'll do some plantings up there near his house on that slope, but there'll also be a fence and a berm down where we were standing on the project. So our intent is that the berm and the fence provides essentially complete screening of the project, and that's what the sections show. But we didn't wanna leave, like, the abutters staring at a fence. So we're proposing landscaping between the abutter property and the fence so that they'll have like a vegetated, obstructed view of the fence.
And...
Thank you.
One other thing, before we leave this. Stacy mentioned that we're proposing some shrubbery here. We're not... Just to be clear, 'cause we discussed this on the sidewalk for the abutters as well. What we're proposing to do in this area for shading relief is to take the big white pines down, the trees that will shade the canopies. But we're not proposing to clear... We're not gonna clear cut it. We're gonna leave the understory. And it's our expectation that the understory will come in more healthily over time. And we're gonna supplement that with the planting rhododendrons and things like that, lower growing plants. But there's a number, and we saw them, we're walking out there on the site visit, there's a number of white pines that are right on this edge, probably within 50 feet of the canal, that are, like, sickly already that are going to come down over the next few years. And so they represent a hazard already in there, a shading nuisance to the project. So that's our intent, is to take the large shade trees down, but to leave the understory, which I think is important for screening by our state.
And then in general, the final note that I'll make, just in terms of the goals and intents for the intent of the screening. So we tried to balance it with native species, which is always preferable for habitat and other factors, but also to include some fast-growing species, so a balance of both so that you'll get some species that over the long term will grow larger and really provide screening, and then also some of the faster-growing species, like the lilin cypress, that'll grow pretty quickly to get some, you know, fast screening. We also consider the placement of the different types of plants. So for example, white pine, we're proposing lower on the slopes because that is nice and bushy when it's small. But as you know, as it grows, it thins out and the canopy is really what will provide the screening, so that'll work well as it grows up to the height of the top of the slope to provide that screening. And then we've also incorporated both deciduous and evergreen. I always like to point this out because I think sometimes there's a perception that you should only use evergreen for screening, which is great, but it can look a little bit false and not natural. And I think by incorporating both deciduous and evergreen, you get better screening overall throughout the seasons and also a more natural look. Happy to answer any questions.
That, just, Mr. Hoffman, just so you see, that... Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, that's the house with blue shadows right there. So that's the house we were standing, kind of looking at, that had the least obstructed view. So he has now proposed plantings right at the property line, right off the road, as well as the fence and the berm down by the project.
And the plantings, yep.
And the plantings in front of the project. And that should all be, I think every section shows what we're... Like the sidelines with the proposed screening.
It shows the existing that will remain and then the proposed as well, so that you can have a sense.
All right, any questions by the planning board? You sure can.
Thank you. So it's about a clarification, you have a question. So on the sidewalk, just to kind of reiterate, you said there's no contamination, sure that's correct? And that these could be polycrystalline solar panels that are gonna be used? Is the solar canopy is according on top of the canal or is it on the canal?
So it's above the canal, right? So, um, if you can visualize that this table was the canal, then we're building a canopy structure that straddles the canal and the canopy will be elevated above the canal.
And on top of that, so for the solar panels, we're gonna be using like glass, aluminum, or for the solar panels, and are you concerned with the refuge? Can it go into the canal, go into the water?
Uh, so we're gonna be using, you know, the Tier 1 solar modules, the same that are installed in all the projects that the town has seen so far. So they're, you know, shadow-resistant glass. They're tested to achieve those, you know, the performance standards of subject to impact inhale with aluminum frames. The, I mean, the panels themselves are inert. I think there's a really low risk of breakage. I mean, what happens with the panels typically, it's like a windshield on your car. The glass may crack, but it doesn't shatter. And then the panel module itself may stop working. But remember, these are all individually, individual panels. So if something like that happens, you'd simply go out and replace it. But it's not a risk of like shattering and fragging and falling into the canal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Any other questions by board members?
A few questions. The proposed screening that you have for both Bow Street and Bunny's Road, will it provide 100% screening before the panels are operational? Because you said some species would take longer to grow and some wouldn't. So would it be fully screened before the arrays were active?
Right, I think combined with the existing woods that's out there, the fact that it's selective for areas of shrub remaining. Also, we can go through them if it's helpful, but with the topographic changes, several of these panels are lower, so you have a limited sightline anyway. So in the Bow Street with the removal of the panels that have been eliminated, certainly, although we are also proposing supplemental plantings. And then in the Bunny's Road area, between, you know, the three layers of plantings that you have kind of spanning a distance, plus the berm and the fence, yeah, there should be full screening.
The purpose, just the purpose of that berm and fence is to do exactly what you said, is to provide positive 100% screening. The purpose of the vegetation is to screen the fence. It's basically to soften the view of the fence and the berm.
No, I just wanna make sure that it's 100% from the get-go. Otherwise, you need all the abutters to sign off on it if it's less. Then more specifically about the Bow Street property. Can you mark on your property, like to go out in real time and mark the trees that will be cut down? I know that the abutter was concerned or interested in knowing specifically what trees would be cut down. And then also, could you, since the panels have shifted and it looks like it's right at that property line, is it possible to go out to where the very last panel will be, from where I'm looking on the left, and put some sort of marker or pole in the air to see if it will be visible from their property? Since right now you're saying with the changes, it won't be visible, can we just ensure that?
We can, I think we can demonstrate it with the sections that we have, but we could also, we could stake it in the field, certainly. We can stake where the proposed limit is. As far as the trees, I think it's a little premature for... We're not gonna be doing the clearing for a while, but we could certainly notify the board or the abutters directly and then take the trees that we propose to cut. And, you know, I'm sure we have some flexibility there. I don't, like I said, we're only proposing to take the, essentially, the white pines, the taller trees. But we can certainly flag the ones that we expect to take before we take them.
Because it is fairly visible from their property. So I just wanna make sure any changes to the... To the property will provide them adequate screening.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Jim? I just had a question for clarification for the abutter. You're moving that one strip of solar panels off, but the plan is, is that in the future, if you're able to solve the... if you're able to solve the title issues, you'll come back as a separate project proposing that kind of solar panel or array in that area?
We, yeah, that's a, like we talked about in the field, first of all, we have to solve the title issues, so if we, if we are able to do that, and all of the other factors are still right, and the incentive front are still there, we may wish to come back. It would be a separate project to your approval and new notification, and then we'd have to meet all the same standards again, so we're not, we don't expect it, it wouldn't ever be a modification to this project. It would be a whole new project.
I just want to make sure they understood that you're discontinuing now, but it could come back in the future, subject to everything working out.
Yeah, I wish I could crystal ball it. All we know right now is it's a, it's a problem, so, but it's not, it won't be part of this permit and approval, and it won't be a modification to this, it would be a whole new project, subject to the same procedural process and approval.
Do you have the cross-section for 48? Because the plans I have only go as far back as 50 Bow Street.
We don't, because there's not, there's, we eliminated what the cross-section was looking at, but we have one for 50, which is the same topog, like, we can demonstrate, I think, the same topography. It's the same, the back side of 48's lot, if he's looking out towards the right, the ground rises up, and 50 is the neighbor, so you can see that the sightline from 50, basically the ground shields all but like the top foot of the, of the canopy. That's the same view that these folks would have at 48, looking to their right. So, but looking straight out there, their lot, there's no longer canopies proposed there.
So then I guess the most important thing would be to, to mark the very end of that, just.
Sure, just like you said, that, like, where we're proposing, we can, yeah, we can stake that.
Yeah, I think that, would that be helpful for you guys? Yeah, okay. And then let, let Jim know, maybe Jim can let us know, and the abutters know when it's going to be done, so it can be seen.
Okay.
That's it for me.
All right, thank you, Jim. Anybody else have anything before I go out to the abutters? Is there, are there any questions that you have, Mr. Goldstein?
I have a question, do these panels need any sound?
Through the chair, no, sir, not, not the panels themselves, solar projects in general, all the, all the panels are interconnected to what's called an inverter that changes the power from DC to AC. Those inverters are, you know, they have little cooling fans in them, and they make an electronic hum, similar to all the transformers that use, like, city commercially in this parking lot and other places, they're, you know, it would be hard pressed for you to hear the noise from an inverter from more than 50 feet away from it.
Any other questions that you have? That's it. Look at the plans more closely than from where you are. You have it a lot better, I'd say.
We'll do it after the meeting, we can walk you through it.
All right. If there are no other questions, I don't think we'll close the public hearing, because if, if we could get, possible to, to get those staked, the end of the canal projects marked out, and to get the trees marked, and so that the Goldsteins, and then maybe some of the planning board members might like to go out there too, so we could take a look, and if that could be done before our next meeting, then we'll take a look at this again at our next meeting.
Okay.
So, you want to continue? So I guess the thing is, is when you get this marked out, I guess you can notify Jim, and then Jim can notify us through emails or whatever, and see if we can get together. But I guess the, the most important people to, to see would be the Goldsteins.
We'll let them know, we'll mark it out and let them know, and we'll let Jim know as well.
Okay.
We just, just other, just so we're covering everything, your engineer did submit a memo with some comments, we responded to it, they submitted a follow-up memo with like two or three other comments that we responded to on Monday. So I think the ball's in their court to review our last submittal, and hopefully we've addressed all their residual concerns, so I don't think there's really anything left to cover on the application but the screening issues. That's, that's my understanding, so if there's anything else, please let us know.
Any other question? You're going to also provide us with revised plans showing the future project removed.
Yeah, recall that we have a giant engineering plan set, so I'm going to try to change as few drawings as possible, I think it's only one or two drawings where we can show, you know, those can't, we'll make them consistent with what we just presented tonight, essentially, so that you'll have officially engineering plans that show the modifications to.
So could we have a decision drafted up by the next meeting? And so that we could, if we chose to approve this at our next meeting, if all our questions were answered, and the abutters were, were happy? Okay. All right, so.
Make a motion to continue the hearing for Renewable Energy Development Partners, LLC to January 28th.
January 28th is our next meeting, yes.
On second.
Motion to second for the discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so that's unanimous, okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your attention.
I just want to bring to your attention, I believe as Jen asked for a listing of the type of crops that they're going to be planting on the site, I believe those are inside your packet, there's.
Okay.
Just for your information. And these were the ones who are, I guess they're considering for the Gate Street project as well.
All right, next. And the last of our public hearings is the application of MT McMahon requesting a special permit pursuant to sections 2230 and 5300 of the Calvansoring Bylaw located at Two Fuller Street in Calvans, Mass., assesses map 50 lots 5-1 to operate an online auto sales business in the general business district. Good evening.
Hello.
Sorry, your last but not least.
It was very interesting, thanks.
If you could give us your names and, for the record, and, oh, yeah, if you could do that.
Hi, my name is Kayla O'Farrell, I'm Michael McMahon's office manager, and we're here following up to the last meeting we had back in December, where I think it was decided you guys wanted to come out, take a peek at what we were doing, I hope you guys have had time to do that and seen everything you needed to. We're just coming back to answer any questions you guys may have in follow-up to the last meeting.
Okay. Jim, so there was time for you to send some staff out there to inspect, to make sure that.
Well, I brought it up to our staff, and they said that, you know, the inspector's been out on Preger's project, and so basically they signed off on the project, so they received the, you know, building inspection, and also the occupancy permit for the project, and so I said, okay, well, to me, that sounds like they wrapped it up. And so what I've done is, you know, have copies out in your package, we're going to take a look at it, and then, you know, the next, you know, part of the process is I do have a decision drafted for the board to take a look at it.
All right, any question by any of the board members?
I wasn't familiar with the property, so I did drive by to look at it, so I didn't want to pop in when I did, because I hadn't called first, but I did.
And truth be told, I was a little nervous, but I hadn't heard from you, so you're welcome to come out anytime, that offer still stands after this, we love giving tours.
Sure.
I drive by there almost every day, and it just, it's so improved the last couple of months when you paved it, and it looks very nice, looks very nice.
Great improvement. Drive by every day, too.
Yeah.
Be some landscaping in the spring, plantings, and that's our intent, is to landscape and plant in the spring.
Was, was that on the original plan?
It was, yes.
Okay, so.
We had done most of the work this year, we had been saving and reinvesting, and we were finally able to put the parking lots in, and, and everything, and now we plant in the spring. We've done basic hydro seeding just to keep soil in place over the winter, but.
This winter's been so mild, it could almost grow grass now, in January.
So, Mr. Chair, through you, my, my initial concern was the amount of clearing that you did recently. The building permit and stuff like that, didn't really give me that much information, I do have to apologize. I live in the neighborhood, so I'm, I'm there all the time. My question was, is whether or not you have a couple of containers out there, storage containers. I was here when we approved your site plan review, the initial one, I do not remember those storage containers being approved on that, so those were the things that I was looking for.
I brought a site plan from Merrill, awesome, this is all you.
It's.
Going to alleviate a lot of me and everybody else's questions, thank you.
So I'm thinking it's this page, and that's the section, and that's your copy, you're welcome to the thing.
I have no more questions, it was on the approved plan that we did.
Those storage containers?
No, they're there.
They're there, okay.
It was part of the approval, you can have that back.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. That was the questions that I've been asked about and stuff.
There was a contention when we went to get approved, and the condition was that we put a fence around it and plantings, which will be done this spring. Should completely screen it.
So my other question is, where are you going to have the two automobiles sitting at?
So we have, I'm sorry, I'll take that over for you, on that same site plan, we have a lot on the front of the building, that's specifically for employees, so we can come and go as we please. The lot on the side is for employees to park during the day, so we were hoping to just kind of put those cars next to the employees' cars. Our intent is not to advertise, we don't even want people to know that they're for sale unless they're viewing it online, so we'd just like them to blend in in the employee lot and have them take two of those spaces on the right-hand side of our building.
Okay, will you be storing vehicles that are not for sale?
Uh, no, not at all. We only have our employees' vehicles, and then our fleet of McMahon installation vehicles that go out every day, and those are all registered, have plates on them and everything.
So you only have two vehicles there that aren't registered?
Correct.
And the maintenance of the vehicles and stuff will just be as similar to what you're doing to your trucks now?
In-house now, yes.
Oh, good.
Do you, will you have ample parking space for those two cars? I mean, is, is every parking space taken up now, or?
No, it's not, we do have ample space.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, you keep growing, I don't know.
Luckily, a lot of our employees carpool, they care about the environment, so not that many people coming in, they share rides luckily.
All right, any other questions? So this was a public hearing, and, so I don't, I don't believe we closed the public hearing last time. So, and seeing, is there anybody out there that has any comments? Seeing no one, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to close the public hearing for McMahon &amp; Sons, Two Fuller Street.
Motion to second for the discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, if you want to, you want to go through the, the decision, Jim?
Sure. Want me to read the conditions? Want me to just read the conditions?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so the conditions, prior to the issuance of a building permit, a true copy of the recorded decision, as registered at the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds, shall be submitted to the board. Condition two, the applicant shall not be marketing more than two automobiles at any time. Number three, the applicant shall designate and mark two parking spaces to be used for the automobile sales business. Number four, in regard to the automobile sales business at the site, the applicant shall not advertise, have any signage, or place decals on the vehicles. And the intent with marking the two spaces wasn't necessarily, it was to leave it a little bit vague, so they didn't have to put signs, but maybe on the spaces themselves, you could, you know, have some paint that designate those for the sale vehicles.
We can do that.
And applicant is not requesting waivers, and so that is it for the recommendations. If anyone has anything they want to add.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the special permit from MT McMahon &amp; Sons, Two Fuller Street, with the conditions that we, that were presented to us tonight.
Second that.
We have motion to second, further discussion, seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck on the.
Thank you.
Business.
Thank you very much, good night.
All right, next, planning board member notes. Seeing none, we'll go on to planning, oh, I'm sorry.
Just want to wish our fellow member, Mr. Robinson, good, good luck with his surgery today.
Speedy recovery.
Speedy recovery, come back soon.
We all miss you. All right, planning director notes.
I have none.
Okay, we have the mint.
We like that.
We have the minutes of November 26th and December 10th of 2019. Does everybody had a chance, so let's do November 26th.
Yeah, I don't have them in front of me. When I went through the two, they were all fine, except the "snap it" road made itself the words snap and it. So I know it's.
Which one was that on?
Well, I know it's December 10th on page three, I don't know if it was in the November one. I thought I had found it twice, but it might have been twice in December, but yeah, it, it changed it to snap it. So I'm not sure if it's in the November one.
Okay.
Other than that, they look fine.
So that's, so we'll, we'll start with November 26th first. So you don't remember which one it was on?
No, I know it's in December, I'm not sure if it was in.
Okay, so November should be fine, then, if we deal with November 26th right now.
Yeah.
On the, I know this is just a clerical error, on the attendees, it says James H. Jen Bogart, slash member, then James Hoffman.
So is that one of the edits thing, or is that something else?
That's one, I don't know if this is the final copy, but.
Yeah, it's not the one with the red lines.
It's not, okay. Can I see it?
It's on the next one, too.
Unless you had a name change.
You have a new name?
Unless I had a name change.
I'm not telling you if I do.
Give it up.
Thank you, sir.
All right, entertainment, entertaining motion to approve the minutes of November 26th with that one in it.
I'll second motion.
I'll second that.
Motion to second, those in favor?
Aye.
And December 10th.
Did you see page three, snap?
Yep.
Got the same attendee again.
Yep.
Make the motion to approve, as amended.
The minutes of December 10th, okay. Have a motion to second, those in favor?
Aye.
All right, our next meeting date is January 28th of 2020.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to second to adjourn, those in favor?
Aye.
And good night, everyone.